We're, uh, I don't know, our clock is gone. Part of our renovation here, I hope you like. Does anybody notice the new pews that they all picked out? Yeah, it looks pretty neat. We're doing some other things in here. My phone says it's seven o'clock, so we'd like to get started. We have a rather large agenda tonight. But in order to help me through this, for any of you who are aware, I lean more and more on volunteer mayors. Because we have a very special guest tonight. This is Hudson Lash. So Hudson, would you come here just a second? And is he dressed nicely or what?
(audience cheering)
This is Matt, you're right over here. And Hudson just came out of Oak Trace. So Robin Lynch gave you a great education over there. Now here you are, King of the Hill over there at fourth grade. And now you're what? The little kid over at fifth grade now, right? So what's it like going into that big building? Speak up.
Why not because like, there's like, more like, teacher and friends.
More friends, yeah. Huh, and a lot of friends? New friends? Have you made any new friends this week? Well, isn't that scary going into that big building?
Yeah, well, we have, I think there's positives.
Positives? What are they? Tell me what those are. Because I don't remember positives going into high school. I don't remember positives going into high school. But tell me what those are.
Like, because there are friends that they, like, they're two or three.
Okay, yeah.
But then, like, they all, like, all turn into friends.
Okay, so some of your old trace friends went to Cary Ridge or Washington Woods, and now you're all back together. It's a great thing. So good grades this year from us, huh? From us, what do you want to be when you grow up? Like an engineer. So you really want to be an engineer, huh? We've got, we've got some engineers here, I'm sure. Good, maybe you could talk to them. Well, I have something here to give you, all right? And this is a proclamation that makes you mayor for tonight. So I'm going to give this to you, and then I'm going home. Is that fair? So. You know Dr. Keen? He used to be your superintendent. I say "used to be." We can't get him out of there, you know? He wants to get rid of me. So this is for you. It says Hudson Lash is a fifth grader at intermedia. And you, your parents want a sign-up option so you get to be mayor for me. So I, Jane Andrew Cook, does that sound, sounds really hot class, right? All right, you, I declare you as mayor for this evening. And you have a city seal and a proclamation that you can take to leave intermedia school tomorrow. I'll show you where you can find it. Can I get my picture with you? Can I get this up here? All right, all right, come up here and help me. So let's, if you would, ask the crowd to stand and we will be replaying the regents. You start this off. I'll lead.
(inaudible) of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now what we do, we ask Pastor Ken Pusky to say a word of prayer before we start because we, as the city government, we need a lot of prayer, okay? And it really helps.
Let's pray. Almighty Heavenly Father, we come in this evening hour and we praise and thank you for the blessings and gifts of this day. We thank you for the community in which we live and all of the prosperity that you've brought to us. And it's with that in mind, Lord, that we also pray for your providence and care as we go forward. And I, as decisions are made, we pray that they would be given wisdom and that things would be done for the benefit of the whole of the community. We pray for those who protect our community, our police officers and firefighters. We pray, Lord, that you'd give them safety in their work. Thank you for their dedication and service and for their willingness to put their lives on the line on our behalf and our safety. So, Lord, we pray for your blessing upon this community and pray that you would always cause us to move forward through your honor and glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
May you welcome everyone? And ask the clerk, please, not the president, for the court.
Hudson.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
All right, first time on the agenda. We have no changes to the agenda, so we'll go to the, move to the overall minutes. We'll have a chance for either minute, so we have a motion to approve the minutes for July eight.
Some of.
February moved.
Second.
By Joe Edwards, any discussion? Do a voice vote on this, all in favor of approving the minutes. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If unanimous, we'll move on to claims. Do you have a motion to approve claims?
Some of.
By Jim Ake, second. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Harkey, any discussion? We've been done with all two, just got the voice voted on, table of claims. Please signify by saying aye.
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 If unanimous, move to the whole business, which will be our action, most of our action items for tonight, Old Business, ordinance nineteen dash thirteen, Pam.
And Dr. Keen, I'm going to stand in for Pam tonight. She was just moments ago called away for, with a family emergency, so bear with me, please. Before you this evening is Unified Development Ordinance Amendment that has been in the works for a little while. It returns to you from the Plan Commission with a unanimous favorable recommendation. Its public hearing was on May eighth. The favorable recommendation is from seven fifteen. So it's, it's been in the works for a little while. The four basic categories that it addresses is some new standards for mechanical screening, some landscaping standard modifications, some infrastructure and utility standard changes, and some other miscellaneous items. And I won't, I'll go into as much detail as anybody wants, but comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thanks, Matt. All right, may I have a motion on ordinance nineteen dash thirteen, please?
Move to approve ordinance nineteen thirteen, the Unified Development Ordinance Amendment for summer of two thousand nineteen.
Motion by Bob Harkey, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Hoover, discussion? Questions? Seeing none. My clerk did have surgery recently and is having a little trouble reading sometimes. So we're going to do a break. When we have no discussion, we're just going to do like, what is going to say? We're trying to read down and see everything. So if I could, please, all in favor of approving ordinance nineteen dash thirteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it is unanimous, there is no opposition. Okay, ordinance nineteen dash nineteen, amendment to the Oak Manor North PUD District. Would you be okay?
Evening, council. For the record, Dan Crabtree with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening is the amendment to the Oak Manor North PUD, specific to a three-acre parcel north of Gunther Boulevard, adjacent to the Grassy Branch Marketplace PUD, to permit an options charter school on this real estate. This item was introduced at the June tenth city council meeting, had its public hearing at the July first Plan Commission meeting, and was forwarded to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation at the July fifteenth Plan Commission meeting. Since its introduction, a couple of additional exhibits have been provided, though the PUD ordinance itself remains unchanged with the exception of the added legal description. This item is eligible for adoption consideration this evening. Dave Coots of Coots, Hinky and Wheeler is present this evening. He does not plan to present, but is available for questions, as am I, if there are questions of staff. Thank you.
May I have a motion on ordinance nineteen dash nineteen?
Move to approve ordinance nineteen dash nineteen.
Steve Hoover, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Ake. Discussion, questions? Seeing none. Seeing that, again, we'll do this by a voice vote. So all those in favor of approval of ordinance nineteen dash nineteen, please signify by saying aye.
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 If unanimous, also, so opposition, it is approved. We will move on to ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two, Westchester PUD amendment. As we begin, Mr. Bass.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. This item comes before you this evening. It's a modification to an existing PUD district. The modification addresses a couple of architectural issues, and some of which I think were unintended consequences of the previous ordinance, but this cleans them up. I'm happy to go into details if anybody has specific questions, or I'm sure Doc, or Mr. Hoover and Harkey can help too. It had its public hearing on July first. Recommendation, unanimous favorable recommendation on August fifth.
May I have a motion on ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two, please?
I'll move to approve ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two, Westchester PUD.
Motion to approve by Steve Hoover, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Harkey, okay, discussion, questions, clarifications?
I'll just comment that there were some changes, additional changes made at APC to further enhance the architectural requirements. It probably doesn't satisfy everyone, but clearly, to me, it is better than what exists today in the ordinance. So it's an improvement over where we were, in my opinion, so I will support it.
Other questions and comments, discussion?
I agree with Steve's assessment that it's an improvement. Support it as well.
I spent the evening at the public hearing as well and listened and watched it go through. And it's probably, it is an improvement, so probably much better than it was. I do understand the whole dynamics of it, doesn't satisfy everybody, but I think it is an improvement.
Any comments? We'll go ahead, then, we have the clerk call the roll on this particular item. So please call the roll.
Yes.
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 No.
No.
Yes. Next item, Jonathan Union Row PUD.
Evening, council. For the record, Jonathan Dorsey with Community Development. For your adoption consideration tonight is the Union Row Plan Unit Development. This project is located at six oh six and six oh eight South Union Street and totals approximately two point five acres in size. This PUD proposes to change the site's current AG SF one I, Agricultural Single Family Westfield District, to an enhanced and modified SF three, single-family, moderate-density zoning. This project plans on allowing the development of seven detached, single-family homes. Since last coming before you, the PUD has seen some changes for grammatical and clarification purposes, as well as the addition of a improved concept plan to better demonstrate different custom home designs that may be seen. Here tonight is the petitioner, Pat Chitton and Jesse Pullman. They do not plan on making a presentation, but they are available as a staff if there are any questions. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please, on ordinance nineteen dash twenty-three?
Some of.
Everybody said it's full jury, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Ake. Discussion, questions, comments? Since this is right in my neighborhood, I'm going to make a comment. I really appreciate their, like, the improvements that are made there. This probably increases our assessment value by about tenfold with those being done and improves the whole area. Probably a good example of Grand Junction spurring some residential growth in the peripheral areas, walkability down to it. I believe it's already two, two sold, pre-sold, and the third one on the way. So it is a nice project for an upgrade to an area. Any other comments? I'm going to go ahead and do this by a voice vote also. We're not discussing its previous meetings either, so. All those in favor of the Union Row PUD, ordinance nineteen dash twenty-three, please signify by saying aye.
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 If unanimous, so we, opposition, we'll move on to Caleb, the Bridlewood subdivision, ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Caleb Ernest with Economic Community Development Department. This proposal is for the rezone of the Bridlewood subdivision. Bridlewood subdivision is located at the southwest corner of one hundred and fifty-first street and Cary Road. This area is approximately thirty-seven acres and is currently zoned the SB PUD, Special Business Plan Development District. This item was introduced to you on June tenth, and it received its public hearing at the July first Plan Commission meeting. On July fifteenth, Plan Commission forwarded a unanimous favorable recommendation, and this item is eligible for adoption tonight. If the council has any questions for staff, I'm available. Thank you.
May I have a motion on ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four, please?
Some of.
Motion by Jim Ake. For approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
By Cindy's full jury. Any questions, comments? Caleb, I'm going to just ask one for clarification. This is just simply the HOA ask for this because it really clarifies a lot of, clears up a lot of conflicts there and other HOAs who could do this too if they want to by coming to the city.
That's correct. If they came to the city and requested, yes.
Seeing no other questions or comments, let's do this by voice vote too. So all those in favor of, in favor of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four, please signify by saying aye.
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 If unanimous, also, so opposition, that ends whole business. We'll move on to new business, resolution nineteen dash one fifteen.
Good evening, president, members of the council. For the record, my name is Amanda Rubideau with the Economic Development Department. JJK Investments has filed a real property tax abatement request for approximate port, an approximately ninety-six hundred square foot, nine hundred fifty thousand dollars spec building at one six eight oh two South Park Drive on approximately one acre. Jim Kent, who has developed several buildings in the area, will be giving a short presentation on the proposed project at the conclusion of my summary. Request is for a ten-year real property abatement, which is structured the same as previously approved real property abatements in the, in the South Park area, where property taxes would be phased in at ten percent per year over the life of the abatement. With the investment of nine hundred fifty thousand dollars into the new building, we anticipate a nine, a seven hundred sixty thousand dollar assessed value. Should council adopt the, oh, sorry, priority council's consideration of a tax abatement request, an economic revitalization area first must be established in accordance with Indiana statute. Should council adopt the resolution in front of you tonight, the request would be back in front of you for your September ninth council meeting in the form of a confirmatory resolution, followed by consideration for the actual real property abatement itself. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jim for his presentation.
Other questions, comments?
Thank you, Amanda. Good evening, council. I'm Jim Kent with JJK Investments. I've been building commercial industrial buildings here in Westfield since nineteen ninety-four. And what Amanda has up there is the, you can see a South Park, a developed South Park. The revitalization zone as it exists right now, if you could flip back real quick, Amanda. You can see the revitalization zone in the yellow. This is just directly north of it, outside of the zone, but contiguous to the existing zone. That lot that I'm looking to purchase is owned by BEC LLC out of Terre Haute. It was XL Collision, was originally sold to them from me back in two thousand and one. They've had a remnant lot sitting there since two thousand and one. It is a one-acre lot. It's in the US thirty-one overlay zone. We have applied to the BZA for the exception for the size of the lot. What I have done in Westfield, of the twenty-five buildings I built up here, nine of them have been speculative through the years. I've been able to sell five of those buildings. Of the spec tenants, of the tenants I have now in the buildings that were built speculatively originally, would include tenants like Discount Tire Regional Headquarters, which is directly south of the Blue Roof Building, South Mobile Office Building, which brought twenty-eight employees. RCS Holdings, which is down in the Wayne Beveridge area, down in West Oak, with fifty-three employees. The Duke Energy Building down there, when I built it, it was for citizens. It was a spec building that they bought as I was going through the process of designing it. Ball Systems is around the corner now, down where I built the building originally as a spec, sold to Dave Socker for Acorn Woodworks. Tenants I have in my multi-tenant buildings now, just to show the draw that we're trying to attract up there. My north building on one hundred and sixty-ninth street, I've got the Adessa Group, which is, has forty of their IT employees down there. I would guess their wages are probably about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars each, for each employee. We have in my old, the Blue Roof Building, which is one of my buildings also, we've got a group out of Wheaton, Illinois called Path of Sands with twenty-five engineers. I'm not sure engineers make these days, but I'm sure it's a significant amount of money. Other groups I have is Vibrant Outdoors with thirty employees. I'm saying they were one of my tenants, Vibrant Doors moved to Whitestown. We have SPD Events, which organizes all the soccer events. They have nine employees. We have BBZ CrossFit with five employees. What I'm trying to do is build a building that is reasonably priced. It's going to match the rest of the buildings in the area. But when I built the other buildings back then, ground was going for about eighty thousand dollars. My construction cost was about fifty dollars a square foot. You can double both those numbers now to get this thing to work. With the small lot, I'm very limited as the size of the building I can build. I can't go out and build a hundred and forty thousand square foot building like a lot of my competitors can do and be able to recoup some of their overall costs and the square footage value for the, the economy scale for the size of the building. So what I'm asking tonight is for you to help me to help Westfield, is what it is. What I'm asking for is the ten-year tax abatement, progress, progressive, as Amanda mentioned. And, for my second sheet here, excuse me. You know, the tax abatement is just one other tool in the toolbox now to attract tenants. The tax abatement may be a hundred, a hundred percent pass-through to my tenants. It's not benefiting me, it's to the tenants, is what it is, to attract decent people. We've had some interest in the building already. Four, I've talked to four different companies. One has thirty employees, one has six, one has fourteen, and somebody's inquired about purchasing the building also, is what it is. So can't really enter into the serious negotiations to determine what my cost is going to be and the overall expenses on a yearly basis, which would include the taxes. I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Any questions?
I have a question. How does, how does tax abatement attract tenants?
Everything is driven by the cost per.
I didn't.
Everything, everything is driven by the cost per square foot. So when I quote a building and I say it's going to be eleven dollars a square foot plus CAM, the CAM charge includes taxes, insurance, and maintenance on the outside of the building. So typically, we run anywhere from two to three dollars a square foot for those items, is what it is.
So their rents going up every year?
Their rates go up. As everything goes up, as far as water and sewer goes up, their rate goes up. Taxes go up, their rate goes up. If the school gets a referendum, their rates go up. So it is, it's trying to stay competitive in the marketplace. And on a smaller building, where all of our costs have gone, basically doubled since we started building up here, the rents have not doubled. We are, it's like, there's a plateau, a ceiling up that we can't pierce through right now, unfortunately.
What do you think this building will be? Do you know, have any ideas?
To rent this one?
Yeah. What, no, I mean, what do you think will possibly go in there?
I, I wish I could answer the question. It's come one, come all. Hope they fit the, basically, the, this model we put them through financially to make sure they're wherewithal. But I've had everybody calling me from, everything from suppliers, manufacturers. I've had contractor calling me. I can't divulge everybody I'm dealing with up there because it's confidentiality, but there's a lot of different interest on the building up there right now.
I'd just like to say, this is an infill project. As you mentioned, it's a small lot. We have water, sewer there, the utilities are there. And so I think it's an excellent project moving forward. Given your history, you've always done fair by the city, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Jim.
May I have just a quick question, clarification. You already said the meeting, the hearing, you invited a session tonight. Next month will be the.
Okay, I'll be back again.
That's correct.
Any other questions, comments? We'll move this on to APC.
Okay.
Nope, actually.
We have to vote on it.
No, this evening you will adopt the confirmatory, the declaratory resolution, and then you'll see the confirmatory and the tax abatement back, back in September.
Oh, that changed from pre-council. I'll use my pre-council. Okay. So. I'll need then a motion on resolution nineteen dash one fifteen.
I'll move that.
Motion by Joe Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cindy's full jury. Let's do this by, we'll call, please?
Cindy?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
All right, new business resolution nineteen dash one sixteen, Westfield Playhouse, Brian.
Yes, as you know, we've been negotiating with Westfield Playhouse and Westfield Economic Foundation to establish this playhouse on property owned by the city, as well as granting them three hundred thousand dollars for the construction and operation of it. This is the resolution that would put that into a formal statement by the council. Two items down from this will be the additional appropriation, which would allow you to spend that next month when that resolution, or that ordinance is adopted.
Okay. Let's see, this is an adoption consideration for tonight, so I need a motion on resolution nineteen dash one sixteen. Maybe we ought to have a little bit more clarification on this from a financial standpoint before we go to the motion. Jimmy, want to give a little bit of a financial background on this?
The financial background is that we have a sponsor for the building, and that's the Paul Estrich Foundation. And the building cost is going, the final building cost is around eight hundred and fifty thousand for the building. It's truly a public-private partnership between the Downtown Westfield Association, the Estrich Family Foundation, the Westfield Economic Development Foundation, and the Theater Group. The Theater Group has raised some funds already, and they have property in Ealtown, which could be sold. Final cost, I said, was eight hundred and fifty thousand now with all the estimates. It'll be triple their audience seating in the new building. They will have indoor plumbing, which is, will be welcome. And they're also part of an encore group, and they have opportunities to solicit some, some grants as well. The city's contribution is three hundred thousand, which the theater will pay back at a thousand dollars a month or twelve thousand a year over a twenty-five-year period. If the theater should default or cease to exist, the building rolls over into the ownership of the Westfield Economic Development Foundation. And so Estrich is contributing four hundred thousand, up to four hundred thousand, and will cover any shortfalls on the construction. They've applied for a foundation grant, or they filed with the state for the foundation approvals, and they will be coming, if this passes, they will be coming to the city for building permits. They'd like to start the foundation, if everything goes according to plan, by the end of August. It's about a four-month, five-month build, depending on the weather. So the things that have to occur before we break ground is the approval of the money, the, the transfer, the appropriation of funding, obtaining the building from rent from the city, and then the signing of the contracts. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to.
The location of the playhouse, just for those who may not be familiar with that.
The location, we, uh, north Union, just north of Penn.
We were told, this was introduced a few months ago, and we were told that there would be no expense to the city. Am I right about that, counselor?
Other than the three hundred thousand dollar grant?
No, there was no, no three hundred thousand dollar grant in the initial.
The initial was a hundred thousand. The building cost went up because if, when you have a theater, you have to have certain things like fire suppression. The electrical was, was underestimated at that time, and we have the hard costs now. So the Estrich was going to contribute something like two hundred thousand at that time. They're now up to, and covering any excessive costs. The theater has raised money. The theater has raised money. They also will have a grand opening fundraiser that will raise about a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. And so those costs have, they've asked for greater participation on the city, but given that they're paying that back over a long period of time, it still says something about their commitment to the project. And the final cost, if, if they default, we end up with a city building of a hundred, eight hundred, worth eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they will be a true community partner. I think it brings arts into the city, which will be benefit to our economic development here in downtown, and a city that has, part of being a city is not taking from the city, but giving to it, giving back, and creating an atmosphere where people have a cultural experience. These people will work very hard with the school system. It'll be an educational opportunity. And as part of the encore group, it'll be a core center for the theater and performing arts, and it could be used for other, other things as well, but primarily play production and education.
Who is the Westfield Economic Foundation?
We've had that in place, Joe, for a while, and they handle the mayor's yellow type ball and the funding for that, and it's a pass-through entity to relay that to our very successful Westfield Youth Assistance Program.
Who are, who are the principals?
Matt Skelton is on the, I'm on the committee. I'm president of the organization, and then we have Daniel Tolan, and who's the other? Bob Smith Esquire is on there, and we have one member that has left, and we need to replace them at some point in time.
I'm all in favor of the arts, but I would hope that we would have a, maybe a little better plan. Maybe there is a plan, I just haven't seen it.
Sure.
But, I, I think we need, in my opinion, we need to set this aside till the plan is apparent to all, and...
Joe, we've been talking about this for a long time, and the Westfield Economic Development Corporation is going to have, we have an upcoming meeting to do exactly what you're talking about.
I'm, I'm kind of confused by this, because this resolution is authorizing a grant, and yet you're talking about a loan. And so, that's not making sense to me right now. And, and actually, a number of these details are more than confusing to me on how this plays out, who the players are. I don't know who Showcase Homes is.
Showcase Homes is the entity that built the theater, it's run by the Estrich Corporation.
See, we don't have a lot of this information, and there are talks about a lot of things that are, you know, to be agreements that are agreeable to the city. I don't know who that is, I don't know what those agreements are. I don't feel comfortable at this time actually authorizing our general fund dollars to be put toward this right now.
What's the risk?
It, it's our general fund dollars. We have other needs too. And again, I don't understand the workings of this. Again, is this even a loan, or is this a grant?
There's a master lease agreements that have to be signed.
Okay, we don't have that. Yeah, we don't have that, yeah.
Yeah, I know. They, you've been through this with the elevations and all this before, and they haven't been signed, but they're waiting for action on this. And I've talked to almost everybody here about this, so it's just something that's a huge, has a huge benefit, and it's truly a private-public partnership between entities, the Westfield Downtown Association, you know, things like the programs we had with Voices of the Past, other civic things that we've done. This gives them a home outside the weather that they can produce educational programming, and...
Well, I agree with all those things. What I don't agree with is just how it's laid out right now. And, again, is this a grant or a loan? Because you're, you're reading, you had emailed that, that's got details of a loan where I don't have that.
Tony drew those up. Do you care to address that, Brian, from your standpoint?
One more time, sir?
Excuse me?
I was talking to the mayor.
Cindy's asking a lease or a loan?
No, a grant or a loan. Saying that this is a grant.
The information I had was a grant. I think the loan he's talking about would be the ground lease that's paid back over a period of time. This, this was introduced tonight so that it could be enabled to allow the financing on the other portions to go forward. There still has, there is still a memorandum of understanding, which some numbers are being shifted around. Not ours, but the others. And that's why you have the A through E as conditions precedent before our money goes anywhere. The Economic Development Foundation is the charitable organization that Jim was talking about. They're to hold the money unless, until all these things are done, the additional appropriation adopted, and then the money can be used for the purposes that'll be spelled out in the memorandum of understanding.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we table this until those things are put into place, and we can get a little clearer picture. I'm, I'm a believer in the arts.
Joe, I talked to everybody on this.
And you talked to me too, Jim, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the thing is, the, this may not happen if we don't move forward. The cost structure could go up. Everybody's ready to go, and I'm, and this has been in the works since we approved the ground lease, or not approved the lease, but the use of the ground for that purpose last, I think it was March, I think it was March eighteen.
But, but we didn't agree to, to participate in cost-wise. We donated the land.
No, we donated the land, that's right, that's right. And we talked about things, and we did talk about the hundred thousand dollars at that time. And so, any delay would be costly, and I would just ask for consideration tonight. And I have had no questions from anybody on council. Cindy, you and I talked to, I had no other, other questions from anybody else on the council body.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, the second, to table this particular item. Is there any discussion on that?
I, I have some questions in general, not specific to that motion. I understand the motion perfectly well, but I do have some other questions.
Well, let's deal with this motion, then we'll go back and see. If this motion passes, then there's no further action. If it fails, then we'll go back and do a motion on the ordinance and have discussion at that point in time. So any, any discussion on the motion to table?
I would suggest we don't move on that.
Clerk, I'm gonna, I realize this is an added motion, but I'm gonna ask you to call the roll on the motion to table this particular item, Resolution nineteen dash one sixteen.
Jim?
No.
Oh, sorry, Jeff Lehman?
No.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Now, I will take a motion on Resolution nineteen dash one sixteen, authorizing a grant to benefit the Westfield Playhouse, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Jimmy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark Harkay. Now discussion on Resolution nineteen dash one sixteen. Chuck?
Thank you. I've had some questions regarding this from the, from the start, and I don't remember a discussion at all about a hundred thousand dollars. I do remember quite clearly that our portion, our participation in this was the ground, and that the Theater Group and some other individuals would be putting together the I understand that costs can go up, but I'm trying to read through this, and, so I have a, I have a couple of questions. I would assume then that what we're doing now, or what we're, what this reads is we're simply approving the three hundred thousand dollars, which then goes to the Westfield Economic Development Foundation, and they work out the lease agreements. Is that correct, Brian? Or, or anybody here? Jim, whoever wants to speak to that?
The money would go to the Westfield Economic Foundation, and then before it can be actually used, A through E in the resolution has to be complied with. The first are that those funds are only to be used for the construction of the playhouse. There needs to be an execution of a construction agreement between the Economic Development Foundation and Showcase Homes, which is the entity actually building it, and the city has to be agreeable to that. That's another fail-safe for down the road. The memorandum of understanding is the document I was discussing earlier that's in negotiations. I think it's just a Scrivener's thing at this point. And then the ground lease has to be executed between the city and the Economic Development Foundation, as well as a master lease between the entity building it and the Economic Development Foundation. So we tied approval to all the agreements, whether we're included in them or not, to our liking before the money can be spent.
Thank you. Under Section E, it says execution of an agreeable master lease from the EDF to the Westfield Playhouse. So we're giving total authority to the EDF for terms of an, of an agreeable master lease, right?
The way it would work is that the Economic Development Foundation would have control over the property, and then they would lease that, lease that property, sublease, to the Westfield Playhouse. We've included that in this resolution so that the terms of that lease has to be agreeable to us as well.
So then, does that lease look like, like an annual cost of twelve thousand dollars for twenty-five years?
I can't tell you now. I don't know.
It's not the condition of this motion though, right?
It's not a condition of the motion, but an agreeable lease is necessary for the money to be spent by the Economic Development Foundation.
And that has to come back through us?
It'll have to come back through the, someone here, yes. The administration, the council. But I also put a drop-dead date on there of October fourth, so that if all the documents are present, then they would have to resubmit. Also, this resolution is just an indication of your willingness to do it. The actual opportunity to disperse funds wouldn't be available or even made by this body until next month at your meeting for the additional appropriation.
Clarification, what if, what if the Theater Group, group is not able to raise their portion? Sounds like they're in for at least a hundred grand, right?
Yes, sir.
What if they can't raise the money?
Estrich and Dan Moyer are guaranteeing that.
What's the, is there a drop-dead date on that? Obviously, that's the October fourth.
Yeah, that will be held as grand opening. The way the timeframe would work, that's probably going to happen next spring.
Let me, let me ask a question while Chuck is pondering a further question there. Can we amend, is it possible for us to amend the motion so that we require this to come back before council to approve the lease next month? You said it could go to the city administration, or it could come to the council. Do we, since this resolution doesn't...
Since this resolution doesn't designate who approves it, you can require it to be here next month, prior to the approval of the additional appropriation. So although this would signify to the other entities that you are willing to go forward, you can still prevent it by not approving the additional appropriation. A two-step financing, so to speak.
I already forgot, made the motion, we seconded it, but will those people be amenable to requiring this to come back to the council in September, so that we can look at all the financials and make sure that we're comfortable with it? I'm not comfortable, I'm sensing a lack of comfort right now, so I'd like the council to be the ones to do the final approval on the lease.
Tonight we take action on a motion before us.
Well, what Brian just said is, we can take action so that we can move forward and draft all the documents, but final approval will come back in September, and we could still say no to this in September.
You'd probably want to put the October fourth date, that, so all the dates run the same. What I mentioned, next month would be the additional appropriation, so no money can be spent until then anyway.
They would like to get started once they have the building permits. That would preclude them starting construction? Yes, no?
Separate issues. I'm not dealing with the building permits. This is the financing.
No, 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 but, but they get the building permits. Would this preclude them from starting construction?
I, well, and I would think so, because...
I would think so too.
There would be no money until next month.
To approve the, the extra appropriation, and that's not the motion before us.
It'd be outstanding if they'd start, because they don't have a loan yet.
Yeah, the, the, this is just a statement of the conditions that you're willing to go forward on. No money would be available to them until the additional appropriation would be adopted at the earliest in September.
I mean, if I understand Dr. Kane's suggestion properly, basically all we would be changing, we'd be moving forward with this tonight. The only difference would be that for item E in the conditions, that this body would have, we want to approve that before we approve the appropriation. Is that...
That is correct.
In other words, rather than letting an agreeable master lease totally up to the EDF, we want this body to approve, also approve, that master lease before we actually make the appropriation. But we could still move forward on this motion tonight with that...
Caveat there, that's correct. That's what I'm asking.
And I think that's an appropriate way to move forward. That keeps this on track. We just need, before our next meeting and before we make that appropriation, we need to see that master lease. And that has to be done anyway before any of this can happen. So we just want to see the master lease. So if that would be, I think you made the motion?
I made the motion.
So if that would be agreeable to add that, and a second, and then we can take action on that motion. I think that's what was suggested.
Okay. You okay with that, Jim?
I, I'll be okay with that.
Yes. So we're saying that the item, item E, is it item E?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's item E.
Item E would require the lease to come back before the council, as well as next month, the additional appropriation has to be acted upon. Other questions, concerns?
I've seconded the motion, and I'm agreeable with Jim having added that in as well.
Steve was doing all the talking about this.
No.
Thank you. All right, let's have a clerk call the roll on Resolution nineteen dash one sixteen.
Jeff Lehman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark Harkay? Yes.
Do you approve it?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
No.
Cindy Spolgeri?
No.
Yes.
Thank you.
On to Resolution nineteen dash one seventeen, enlargement of the EDA Wheeler Landing Project. Again, Brian.
Thank you. The Wheeler Landing Project, you're well aware of. We did a bonding for the infrastructure that the city wanted to that project, and when we got done, sent it to the county, and the county wasn't happy with the outline of our economic... of our economic development area. What happened was, we outlined only what was necessary for the infrastructure, thereby cutting some parcels in half and creating two tax parcels. County didn't like that. They asked us to put it all in one. This is merely enlarging the EDA to encompass those parcels that the county requested that we go ahead and include in this EDA to make their job easier, I guess. But this has already had a preliminary resolution at the Redevelopment Commission. It went to the Plan Commission last week for an order confirming that this would be compliant with the comp plan. This is now before you for a resolution, before it goes to the Redevelopment Commission for a confirmatory resolution and the maps will be changed.
With that, may I have a motion for, a motion on Resolution 19-117 and we'll get the discussion after the motion.
So we...
Joe Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Archay?
Let, timeout, let the record show that it's not Resolution 19-117. Is that right? Is it 19-117?
Yes.
For the enlargement of the Wheeler Landing?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Any questions, if comments, concerns, clarifications needed on this resolution? Say no? Let us do this by a voice vote. All those in favor of Resolution 19-117 approving the enlargement of the EDA Wheeler Landing Project, please signal aye.
Aye.
A unanimous vote. We'll move on. Ordinance 19-29, additional appropriation. Brian?
What you have before you is an ordinance that's set for a public hearing tonight, was duly advertised and has two components to it. There are two numbers which we are requesting as additional appropriations. The first one's the $300,000 we discussed two matters ago for the playhouse. The second one is $392,500, which are insurance proceeds. I believe it was hail damage to the public safety building. We received those monies and now need additional appropriations so they can be moved around. Is that correct? So tonight, all we need is a public hearing to be held and it'll be carried over to next month.
So there's no action required tonight?
No, sir.
Public hearing and action will be next month. Okay, I have 7:52 to open the public hearing on the additional appropriation.
Good evening. I'm Marla Ailer. I live at 1602 East 203rd Street. Have to admit, I'm a little confused about what happened. I've tried to adjust some of the questions that I had, but bear with me. I've come to speak to you tonight about the $300,000 appropriation for the Westfield Playhouse. A gentleman named Randy Cohen blogged it best when he said, "The arts are fundamental to our humanity. They ennoble and inspire us, fostering creativity, goodness, and beauty. The arts bring us joy, help us express our values, and build bridges between our cultures. The arts are also a fundamental component of healthy communities, strengthening them socially, educationally, and economically. I am gratefully and hap, I gratefully and happily support the arts in this community. I have attended Main Street Productions' performances at the Westfield Playhouse and look forward to doing so in the future. The rendering of the new building featured on their website looks amazing. Bathrooms and running water are not only a bonus, but a must for the patrons and performers." Putting my enthusiasm aside for just a few moments, I have the following concerns about the history and future of appropriations you are now considering, because I don't understand when you're going to do it. So I'll say it now. Land commitment has already been made to the Westfield Playhouse for its use. After making a public document request today for an appraised value of the land, Mr. Zager stated that no responsive documents exist. The Department of Public Works approved payments for parking in the downtown area for roughly $37,500 annually, as parking will not be required for the playhouse. Now the council will willing, willingly appropriate funds for the building. Does the benefit of granting them all of this outweigh your citizens' requests for infrastructure improvements and commitments to public safety? This is not a theater or arts problem. This is a Westfield City Council problem. Resolution 19-116 asks you to authorize the money and Resolution 19-29 appropriate the funds, excuse me, without the documentation required in the previous agenda item. They include the execution of the construction agreement between Economic Development Fund and Showcase Homes, the execution of a memorandum of understanding, the execution of a ground lease, the execution of an agreeable master lease. And it asks you to do this all by October 4th. In this extraordinary boondoggle of an agenda, someone will have eight weeks to draft it, read it, agree to it, and look at it and review it, but you've had just minutes to make a decision about whether to appropriate it or not. You, as counselors, should have had these documents so that you can read them and have a full understanding before asking to vote on something. I feel like you've put the cart entirely before the horse. I'm emphatically not asking you to not fund the playhouse. I favor you funding the playhouse to some degree, but more than anything, I'm asking you to understand what you're funding, what the requirements are, what the simple request is, and wonder why you just can't wait until you have everything in front of you and signed and grant them the money that they ask for. Thank you.
Any other? With that, I'll close the public hearing at 7:57.
I'd like to respond. Those documents that you mentioned are drafted, they've been drafted, they're before the theater group for comments to come back. All the construction documents have been drafted, all the memorandum of understanding has been drafted, the other documents you mentioned have been drafted. So we're waiting for comments and, and we'll go from there. But they are, they're out there being reviewed as we speak.
And just another matter, we're not voting on this tonight. There's only a public hearing until we have the documents, the vote will take place next month. So... Okay, on to ordinance 19-31. Brian, you're on a roll, so...
Last month, we talked about this a little bit. Has to do with our solicitation ordinance. Solicitation ordinance needed to be tweaked a little bit and what the city has done is tried to introduce a new way for people to express their not wanting to be solicited to, for lack of a better word. City is initiating and placing on the website a no-not list where you can register not to be solicited to. Wouldn't require a sign, which is currently what we do now. And we also made our time restraints, a little more compliant with some of the actions that are going on throughout the country. This is here for your review. Look to finalize it perhaps next month if you're comfortable with it. There are just a few tweaks. We'd ask you to take a look at it, give me any questions or contact Vicki if you have any desires or issues with it. So this is merely an introduction.
No action required on this tonight. Are there any questions or comments or concerns from any council member?
Have we received any feedback from the entity who was questioning us on our legality?
Uh, yes. Actually, the, what we're doing now, try and make sure I don't say anything I shouldn't say in a public meeting because those were negotiations and settlement negotiations, not really, because no one's been sued. The compliance with everything that's going on from New York to California, Minnesota to Florida, is something very few people keep their eye on constantly. And I think this ordinance will adhere to however our ordinance is going to be read by anybody. So with that, yes, they have commented, I've talked with them and other people. And by other people, I mean other people would be impacted by this, primarily other solicitors and vendors. And they understand this is going to be compliant, it's not something they want to see. Nobody, solicitors who are in the business of going door-to-door do not want to make it easy for people to opt out of that opportunity. But given the technology and the ability on the website, we're able to make it pretty easy. So I have had comments, they don't like it, they understand there's not much they can do about it.
So many of the solicitors, it seems, are not the kind that are coming to the city to seek approval to actually go door-to-door. And what is our enforcement really going to be on that? I mean...
Wait, let's back up a second. You say, "It seems they're not properly licensed," is that what you're saying?
I, I can't tell you how many people I hear from that are telling me that, no, these people, they ask to see a license of which the solicitor does not have.
Do they call the police?
Well, that's, that's always the thing, right? Because people...
Well, yeah, they shouldn't be calling you, they need to call the police.
Well, no, and that, and that's where, actually, there's an issue. People do not like using our, our public safety resources on something that is, you know, basically a nuisance.
Well, this one will be no different, so that isn't, that really doesn't have anything to do with it.
Right. Is there going to be an education component to this with businesses somehow? I mean, how, how are these entities going to find out?
Well, of course, there would have to be, there would have to be a huge public. I mean, I've heard from a couple of neighborhood leaders and they don't like it, and I understand. But when we explain to them that we are being challenged with a potential federal lawsuit and this is what we have to do to avoid it, then it's like, okay. Remember the day when we all had telephones at home? And we had that, that, that no-call list? Remember that? And you had to get onto it by registering with the state? That's, that's exactly what this is. It's, it's somewhat of a hassle, but...
So ju, just so I understand, you will be able to either put up the actual no-soliciting sign on your door or register? Both will actually be...
You have to register online.
Right. But that's what I'm saying. I mean, if I did that, I don't have to put up a...
If you want a sticker, you can have a sticker. But you need to register online so that we can present a list to people that, who are, you may not call on.
So you won't need to also have the no-soliciting tag on your door?
You can do that if you wish.
Because that's been a complaint too. A lot of people have not wanted to attach that and, and I get it. So they can register for the list and it has the same effect as posting on the door.
The license process will have the website attached to it. They sign off, under, they sign off stating they understand the restrictions of their solicitation ordinance and are aware of the website and they're not to knock on the doors or solicit to the doors that are registered.
The good thing is the list is for three years before you have to review it, so at least that will receive a standing three years in return.
I mean, a lot of people are going to look this as another government intrusion, regulation requirement, but we're being forced into this by some solicitor, professional, well-financed...
I really wish we could do an opt-in list and see how many people sign up for that.
Well, exactly.
No, we cannot, but...
Mayor, when you said that several community leaders were upset about this, you, they're not upset about our ordinance, they're upset that they, that their neighborhood signs will no longer prevent solicitation, is that correct?
I, it takes a minute to explain to people why we're doing this. It, it looks to the public right now, it just looks like you as a group have decided this is what we want to do and why do we need to do it? Because we have a perfectly good ordinance. Well, when I explain to them that we're being challenged with a legal suit and the only way that we can make it right is to do it this new way, they're like, "Okay, how can we help?" But until you have that discussion, and, you know, Vicki is working very hard to get it out to everybody, but you know how that is. And so it's gonna, there's gonna be a period of, "What in the heck are you guys doing here?" So we'll get through it.
So they're, the clarification I was looking, they're not opposed to the no-solicitation, they're opposed to the way they now may have to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. How it is being forced upon us to do it would be the right term.
You don't have to have your name on the list, it's your address.
Correct. There'll be no names on the list.
And there won't be any issues with maybe several people residing and who, who actually does that cover? You're actually signing for your whole property. So if there were 10 people living there and two were okay with it and eight weren't, for instance, it would still cover the entire property.
Just like the phone list.
They'll have to fight that out.
Yeah, they'll have to fight that over at Thanksgiving. We're not going to do that.
Okay. Now we'll move ahead. Ordinance 19-32, Atwater PUD, Jonathan.
Good evening again, council. For the record again, my name is Jonathan Dorsey with Community Development. Before you tonight is the introduction to Atwater PUD. This planned unit development is provoked, presumed, excuse me, proposed to rezone a location north of the intersection of Casey and 193rd Street. It's approximately 100 acres in size and this project proposes change the current AGSF-1 zoning to a modified SF-4 single-family high-density and an SFA single-family attached zonings. The proposed development does have a maximum of 280 homes split between single-family and duplexes. This project is located in the area identified as New Suburban by the Comprehensive Plan and its northwest corners located within the rural northwest area. Here tonight is the petitioner and the representative, John Dabishawitz, who would like to make a short presentation before any further action. I am available for questions, as is John, if there are any. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, my name is John Dabishawitz, I'm a land use professional with the law firm in Nelson &amp; Frankenberger. We represent the petitioner, Olthoff Homes. Present tonight is Todd Olthoff, one of the owners of Olthoff Homes, Jeff Pape, also with Olthoff, Jim Schinner, an attorney with our office, and other members of our development team. The matter before you this evening is the introduction of the Atwater Planned Unit Development District, which is a rezone request to permit the development of a mixed-use residential neighborhood. As staff indicated and as shown on the exhibit on display, the real estate is outlined in yellow on this aerial. Commission members to your left. The site is generally located north of and adjacent to 193rd Street and west of and adjacent to Six Points Road and is approximately 100 acres in area. As a point of reference, the new citizens' water tower is located in the parcel immediately east of the real estate along 193rd. So if you look upon the aerial, the water tower is located on this parcel right here immediately to our east. Six Points Road is along the east perimeter, 193rd is along the south, with Casey Road which tees into the site right here presently. The real estate is generally surrounded by agricultural uses and single-family homes to the west and north, with a stone business and additional residences located on the east side of Six Points Road. The stone business property is right here and the few additional residences along the east side of Six Points Road. The subject real estate is AGSF-1. Surrounding zoning includes the Osborne Trails PUD to our east. The OI, our open industrial parcel, is shown in gray where the stone business or stone center is located. The Spring Mill Trails PUD is south of and adjacent to our site on the south side of 193rd Street, including the Emery Trace subdivision, which was approved by the Plan Commission earlier this year and is now under construction. Parcels to our north and west are zoned AGSF-1 like the subject parcel. This next exhibit is the Westfield Comprehensive Plan overlaid with the various surrounding developments. As Jonathan mentioned, the Osborne Trails to our east, Spring Mill Trails in Lancaster to the south, and Chatham Hills further removed to the northeast. Like the subject parcel, they are all designated New Suburban on the Westfield Comprehensive Plan where the proposed type and style of development, mixed-use residential... Plan, where the proposed type and style of development, mixed-use residential, is contemplated under the terms of the Westfield Comprehensive Plan. A small area of the site, as indicated by staff, falls under the area identified as rural northwest, and therefore, the plan, as we will review in a moment, provides an open space transition in the far northwest corner of our site. Again, council members to your left on display, our site outlined here in green, this is the Osborne Trails PUD in black. In the darker green color is Chatham Hills, you can see Chatham Hills extends into that rural northwest area as well, with the larger area, this is just that small corner that staff had described, that's in that rural northwest vicinity. The area to the south of Spring Mill Trails PUD, as well as Lancaster, approved by you earlier this year, falls within that area identified as New Suburban. We put this next exhibit together to assist in illustrating the surrounding neighborhoods and show what is under development within the area. You can see Chatham Hills to the far north and east of our site, Osborne Trails immediately to the east, Emery Trace, again adjacent to the south, and Lancaster further to the south. So this is the plan that was approved earlier this year by the Plan Commission for Emery Trace, the subdivision. Lancaster was another mixed-use plan unit development to our south. Osborne Trails, the empty nester age-restricted community under construction here, Chatham Hills, and additions to Chatham Hills, further removed to the north and to the east of our site. 193rd is right, excuse me, 191st is right here, the balance of Grant Park. 191st will transition at some point in the future with a new roadway construction to 193rd. 193rd Street located here, Six Points Road, our site again, 100 acres in area. One can see that the subject parcel is next to the parcels which are adjacent in existing neighborhoods currently under development. This is the proposed district plan. As indicated again by staff, there are three districts. As proposed, Atwater will include an incorporated diverse mix of residential home offerings in these three districts. The exhibit on display illustrates those three districts. Again, approximately 185 single-family detached homes are included in Area A and Area B, as shown here, 105 and 81 lots respectively, with SF-4 as the underlying zoning district, with larger lots provided in Area B. So Area A here, which is consistent with the lots in the development to our east, Osborne Trails. Area B with a little bit larger lots, and then that common area transition over here to our far northwest corner, which is designated as that rural northwest, there's a wooded area further removed to our north and west. Area C, shown here in the green color, along 193rd, will include no more than 94 attached for-sale duplex dwellings with SFA as the underlying zoning district. This is the proposed concept plan, which is on display currently. Access to the neighborhood will be from primary entrances along Six Points Road, across from the entrance to Osborne Trails, and 193rd Street with secondary connections via future sub-streets to the north and west to provide connectivity to future development. Atwater will provide over 25% open space, including both passive and active amenities, which will be centrally located in the neighborhood as enumerated within the PUD, as well as on the concept plan shown here. In addition, a trail network, which are the lines shown in red on the plan on display, will provide connectivity between the neighborhood and the Little Eagle Creek Trail to our south, as well as providing over two miles of onsite trails within the neighborhood. Character exhibit examples of the three home product types are included in the PUD, with a few illustrated here. As noted, two residential product types, single-family and two-family homes, will be provided in the Atwater to offer a diverse for-sale housing options. These options include duplexes and detached homes, which serve the market of move-up buyers as well as empty nesters. As required under the terms of the PUD ordinance, all homes within the development have architectural standards above those required under the existing UDO, which are included in the text of the PUD. Oltoff is in the process of updating its villas, the ranch-style home which are shown along the top row of illustrations, which will be built in Area A. It's anticipated that these homes will be in the mid to upper 200s. The homes within Area B will be a mix of ranches and two-story homes that can be accommodated, a third-stall garage. The average home price within Area B is anticipated to be $300,000. This area is planned to provide an opportunity for Oltoff to continue to serve the area home-buying market with homes similar to those currently being offered by Oltoff Homes within Shelton Cove, where home construction within that area is nearing completion within the next year. The duplexes or two-family homes proposed for Area C are shown in the lower right-hand corner, and these homes are anticipated to be in the low 200s. Numerous architectural enhancements are also detailed in the PUD for the two-family home Regarding amenities, Atwater will again provide 25% open space, including large landscape buffers detailed in the ordinance. Examples of these many amenities are shown here and detailed in the ordinance as well. As required under the terms of the PUD, where there isn't direction within the existing UDO, a large playground, lake with fishing deck, fitness stations, recreation and picnic shelter, outdoor kitchen, community fire pit are all amenities that, which will be required within the neighborhood. These amenities, again, are connected by over two miles of onsite trails. Likewise, the community amenities will all be managed and maintained and owned by a neighborhood association for all the residents within the neighborhood. In conclusion, Atwater continues to respond to the call for greater diversity in home products within individual neighborhoods by providing an expanded range of for-sale housing options. Later this month, we'll conduct a neighborhood meeting, our official neighborhood meeting. We'll send notice to those folks which are, would otherwise receive notice of the September 3rd Plan Commission meeting, so that's September 3rd. We'll have our public hearing in front of the Plan Commission. We'll have a neighborhood meeting in the upcoming couple of weeks, and we'll give notice to the council of that meeting date and time. We appreciate your time this evening for introduction. Would respectfully request that this matter be forwarded on to the Plan Commission for, again, public hearing on September 3rd. Thank you.
Any other questions, John?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
What's the projected build-out for this?
It'd be a, it would be a five-to-seven-year build-out, starting after construction. So if the council were to approve later this year the ordinance, they would go through primary plata, and we'd send out notice, again, go back in front of the Plan Commission late this year, early next year, start construction next year. The soonest a house would be coming out of the ground would be this time next year or later. And then a build-out starting 2021, advancing five to seven years, depending on how well it's received in the market.
Any other questions? And then we'll move this on to APC.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Jonathan, you're up again on the ordinance 19-30 dash 33.
Evening, council. Hope you're not tired of seeing me up here yet. For the record, I'm Jonathan Dorsey with Community Development. Before you for introduction tonight is the Poplar Street Townhomes Plan Unit Development. This project is located on the west side of Poplar Street between Jersey and Park Street. This proposes to change the current zoning of MF-1, which is multifamily low-density, to SFA, single-family attached residential. This project proposes a maximum of 24 townhomes. This project is located in the area identified as the Gateway Subdistrict to the downtown district in the Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Grand Junction Economic Development area. Here tonight, representing the project is Brian Stumpf, who would like to make a brief presentation to explain the project further. Staff will be available to answer any questions afterwards. Thank you.
My name is Brian Stumpf with Levin Street Development. I'm here tonight representing Estridge Homes with a site that we're very excited about. On the screen in front of you is the Comprehensive Plan, identifying the different gateways. This is the Grand Junction Subdistrict Plan. We are in the Gateway District, shown in green. And as you can see, our site is on a, it's in a transitional location on the west side of Poplar Street between Jersey and Park. I say transitional because while the Gateway Subdistrict is known or characterized by tall buildings with significant architecture, the plan talks about much more. It does talk about here along 31, that the buildings need to be tall, 75 feet minimum, at least five stories. On 32, you're looking at buildings that are between 28 and 50 feet tall. And then off of 32, on the interior, identifies a maximum height of 40 feet for properties in this district. Across the street from us, over in the Junction Subdistrict, this portion of the plan that butts us to the east is the Park Street Corridor Subarea. This is a subarea that is focused on adaptive reuse of the existing buildings that are out there, and reuse. New development, or new construction that happens is identified to happen on individual small lots with only one or two-story buildings. And really looking at some eclectic style. This is a kind of a close-up of the site showing the context. Our site is 1.1 acres, which is 10% of the southeast corner of the Gateway Subdistrict. One of the concerns that we've heard, we met with the Grand Junction Task Group last week, one of the concerns we heard is that there was some concern of, would this development of the site inhibit the development of the remainder of that quadrant? And I'd say emphatically no. In fact, the opposite is true. Why do I say it with such confidence? We're currently involved with another site in the Indy Metro area that is looking at having a hotel, lots of office space, medical office, retail, some different apartment options and condo options, as well as townhomes. This, these townhomes are actually in the very first phase of this project. Why? Because to provide patrons to the businesses in the community. We view the same would be true here. In looking at what could happen in the remainder of the quadrant, we look at the, our site is here, our one-acre site is here, Jersey comes through this way, Park Street's down here. The remainder of this site could be developed at over 700,000 square feet of office and retail. Plus, this is the same footprint as the previous plan, we have a 215-room hotel. So all these other items or uses can fit on this site. And again, and done with in a way that's got the design that we've always talked about with Grand Junction, with having a focal point, community green at the end with the office behind. So these are going, four or five stories, fitting the comp plan of entrances on to Main Street and so forth. And so you're going from, you know, it's going to be a nine-story building, five-story buildings, four-story buildings through here, transitioning down to the townhomes, which are two and a half, and across to the one- and two-story buildings on the east side of Westfield Boulevard. So our site itself is identified, Poplar Street, which will one day become Westfield Boulevard, will be widened, so this green that's currently in the right-of-way will go away. We have a total of 24 units, structured in buildings that contain between two and four units apiece, with a balanced mix of three different floor plans that are designed, specifically designed for this site. The garages, the fronts of the homes all face out to the existing streets, the garages are tucked in the back off of this internal court. We also have a courtyard here that the homes front upon to open that green space and bring that into the site. The site itself, we have two-car garage with every single unit, plus one space for guests for those units. And we're looking at the townhomes to range in price between $350,000 and $400,000 apiece. This is a $9 million project here in downtown. Give you some perspective, that's 18 times the current assessed value of the, of the properties. One of the things the comp plan talks about is having signature architecture, and that's exactly what we provide here in this transition. We have two-and-a-half-story buildings, you'll see the elevated entries out to the roads. So the lower level has the garage and some flex space, you see that with the windows down here. The main floors have your living areas and things with the, with the bedrooms above. And also elements to signify or mark the corners of the site. This is the view along Poplar Street, kind of coming into that courtyard. We'd have monuments and things that help draw attention that way. One thing I'd like to note is that this is an important part of Poplar Street. I've been involved with Grand Junction for quite a while, in fact, it was 10 years ago that I was leading some of the presentations to the public about the plan. And it's, to me, this project is important because it represents a shift in the investment in downtown from adaptive reuse that's been happening, of taking an existing building and just repurposing it into new construction. And it sends a signal to the investment community, it's a different type of investment in the community. And this is one of these things that is key in using the flywheel analogy of pushing the flywheel and getting momentum going and having it continue. So what we're requesting tonight is just to be advanced to the Plan Commission. Thank you.
Council members, have any questions or comments?
Just, I'll just comment that I was at the Grand Junction Task Group meeting when this was discussed. And I think the only, I think everybody loved the product. The only concern was it's on the wrong side of the street. Now, as I said then, and I'll say again tonight, I could be persuaded otherwise, I think it is right on the edge, and I know comp plans are, are, and plans are meant to have some flexibility. So I'm kind of on the fence right now, I could be persuaded either way, but I love the product. Any place, I mean, in the right place downtown, and this could be the right place, I'm just not sure right now, but I love the product, I think it'd be great.
Other comments?
Brian, you said this was, your project's at 1.1 acre, how big is the area surrounding it, behind US 31?
Yeah, so this southeast quadrant is about 11 acres.
Any other questions, comments? Brian, I'm just going to give you my initial reaction. I, in my mind, this area is a commercial retail area with housing kind of on the edge and periphery, so this parcel is one of the most valuable parcels, I think, as the redevelopment goes. And I think it may pay the community a lot more if this were commercial. So I'm, I'm a little bit like Steve. This is a great product, this is, these are beautiful buildings, but it may not quite be the right location. So as we move through the process, I'll be listening carefully for all the discussion and interplay with APC and other people about that, and, you know, hopefully we'll come to the right resolution at the end. But, again, my impression with this area, it's more commercial retail than it is residential.
I think if it, if it is residential, it needs to be a higher-density product residential, just personally. And again, I love the, I love this product, it looks fantastic, I'm sure you'd sell a lot of them. But it's also kind of establishing feel there that is more geared toward a single-family kind of residential product. It's not, not a high-density multifamily, so...
If I could just chime in, this is not your typical townhome, as far as density, this, these are 20 units an acre. So we're at apartment densities here, even though they are townhomes. Because we're going vertical ones.
Well, we get half the taxes then, too, though, just so you, you know, putting perspective, just looking at that.
I have a comment. I think in regard to taxes, I mean, obviously, we want more taxes, but I don't, I don't consider that the first, the first thing that we look at. I agree that this is a highly desirable location, we really like your product, so I was listening the other day, and we'll continue to listen, but it would be really cool if we had a whole project that showed that slide up, where everything was developed, so we know what we're getting all at one time. So bring us that hotel, and the offices, and all those other components.
Any other comments? And then we'll move this on to APC. Thank you, Brian. Ordinance 19-34, Dane.
The record Dane Crabtree of the Community Development Department. The item for you is proposed amendment to the 181st Street PUD, which is located on the south side of 181st Street between Wheeler Road and US Highway 31. The proposed amendment is essentially twofold. It proposes to add warehousing and distribution operations with outdoor storage to the list of temporarily... of temporarily permitted uses. The outdoor storage areas would be restricted to an area shown as an exhibit to the PUD. It also proposes modified front and side yard setbacks, and adds a site plan for parcel E, which is the vacant land located at the southeast corner of 181st Street and Wheeler Road, as well as hotel and restaurant character exhibits, both of which are already permitted uses. The site item is scheduled for a public hearing at the September third Advisory Plan Commission meeting. A representative from Church Churchill and Andrew is present this evening. On behalf of the applicant, would like to give a brief presentation.
My name's Bruce Bittner, I'm a partner with Church Churchill and Andrew in Noblesville. Our land use professional Andy Ward is along with me tonight assisting. We're pleased to be here and ask your assistance in helping us amend an existing ordinance. This ordinance has been on the books for about five years, adopted originally in 2014, and last amended in 2018. What you're looking at here is the north, I'm sorry, the westernmost, about five and a half acres of a twenty-five-acre PUD area. This area is our conceptual plan for the to-be-developed five-and-a-half acres, currently vacant ground. We need some developmental standard amendments in order to make this concept fit. We're looking at decreasing the setbacks along Wheeler Road and 181st Street to get the buildings closer to the road, so that we can have more internal space and parking as you go east and south. The balance of the parcel is a pre-existing industrial use that's been in place for many years. It was, I understand the way back was an abandoned lumberyard that now has several tenants. One of those tenants would be moving its headquarters into the new office space here. We'll have a hotel there to the south of the courtyard, right here, this will be an eighty-five-room hotel. This complex will be office, retail, and restaurant, so one of our industrial tenants will be moving into the office space. That'll leave a vacancy in the industrial area, and we have the opportunity to bring a national construction supply tenant in there, ABC Supply. They would like to have a presence in Westfield, they're a ten-and-a-half-billion-dollar roofing company. We expect they'd bring fifteen new jobs to Westfield, along with ten million dollars in annual sales. In order for ABC to do that, we need to tweak the ordinance a little bit to provide for some outdoor storage. It would not be, it would be internal to the existing industrial area, and Andy, you might help me switch our slide. I think we need to go back to the chart. Outdoor storage, there we go. So here, from a different perspective, the last exhibit that you saw was this area to the north and west side of the property. Outdoor storage would be contained approximately in this area in a pretty, pretty well-defined area of the existing parcel. We've had some comments that staff and council might like to see. I hate restriction on any outdoor materials that can be stored there, and we'd be glad to work through that with staff and council over the course of the next month. I don't want to take up more of your time than we need to tonight, I know you have a long agenda. If you have any comments, we'd be glad to hear them, otherwise, we'd ask that you send this to the Planning Commission for consideration at their next meeting.
Bruce, what are you considering storing in the outdoor storage?
It would basically be roofing materials, shingles, the things that they use in their business. I think right now, there's several cranes maybe that have a high elevation. We'd have, I believe, palletized construction materials, and we could put a, we'd have to talk to the client and staff, but I think we could come up with a reasonable height restriction as to how high those pallets could be stacked, so that they're not as visible to the people off-site as those cranes might be, or the bucket trucks that are parked there now. Does that answer your question, Joe?
Well, I'd kind of like to visualize what that looks like. That's in my territory. I'd like for it to look halfway nice, whatever it is, and sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't.
We can, I think we can get you as many photographs and examples as you'd like, maybe here in the course of the next few weeks.
Okay. That would be really important. This is a high-trap, this area is a high-traffic area for out-of-town people, too, so the way this looks would be very, very important.
Your comment reminds me that this is a, certainly a transitional plan. I'd remind everybody that the existing ordinance provides for a sunset of the industrial uses in 2028. And so ABC would be willing to come in, knowing that this would be, you know, the big picture of things, a relatively temporary use. So they'd need to find other arrangements in nine years as this industrial ground transitions to other use as we get, and of course, this is step one. As we get the western edge of the property developed, that'll enhance financing abilities to do the rest of the project.
Just something else I'd like to consider, too, if you would. I don't think having all that parking on Wheeler Road makes the most sense. I mean, basically, what it's looking like is gonna be giant parking fields for a lot of that area that's on the south portion. The way it's structured right now, at least, that's how it's looking.
This area down here?
Right, and I don't, I haven't looked at your language and stuff like that, but I know we wouldn't typically allow parking like this, this setup and any kind of configuration, so I don't know how that changes your site plan. And I don't know what you, is that a park area you have in the middle between the restaurant and the hotel?
This is meant to be open-space park area. I believe that this site here is potentially for another use. But right?
I think that's right. This is more or less a pedestrian plaza in here, with a possible future use here.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Then we'll move this on to APC.
Thank you.
Dane, I think you're up for Cedar Brook Commons.
For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you is a new PUD, the Cedar Brook Commons PUD, proposed for approximately sixteen acres at the northwest corner of 186th Street and Spring Mill Road. The real estate is currently zoned AGSF-1, single-family rural, and is proposed to default to LB, Local Business District, with agriculture and agritourism uses also permitted. Special exceptions of the underlying zoning would be prohibited. Various development standard modifications are also proposed in the PUD, as is a concept plan and illustrative layout, which show the real estate split into areas for buildings and fields in detention. This item is scheduled for a public hearing at the September third Advisory Plan Commission meeting, and Jesse Pullman of William Trace Development is present this evening to give a brief presentation.
Good evening, president, members of the council. My name is Jesse Pullman, present this evening on behalf of the applicant, who I have Dr. David Robleski with me this evening, who owns and farms the property currently. As highlighted by Mr. Crabtree, this ordinance is for a change of zoning for the sixteen acres located on the northwest corner of Spring Mill Road and 186th Street. The request is for a PUD district to be known as Cedar Brook Commons, that will allow for the development of the property for commercial and agritourism uses. As depicted in the illustrative layout here on the screen, the proposed development establishes a presence on the roundabout of 186th Street and Spring Mill Road, which mirrors the planned development pattern for the southwest corner of this intersection, includes Sundown Gardens. The illustrative layout also depicts the planned agritourism use on the north side of the property, that will include the continued farming for a portion of the property, which is intended to be an asset that will enhance the customer's experience for the planned agritourism use. The crops could include a vineyard, hops, and/or wheat fields. The character exhibit that's included with the ordinance further embraces the vision for the development by depicting architectural styles that mirror the modern with the rural character. The exhibits and proposed standards are consistent with and complement the standards in the uses that are permitted on the southwest corner of the intersection, while at the same time incorporating the city's current standards, but allowing for the unique buildings that are envisioned by the applicant. The proposed ordinance, as Mr. Crabtree noted, defaults to the local and neighborhood business district, so this includes permitted uses and development standards that are local and neighborhood in scale. Prior to the public hearing at the September third Plan Commission meeting, we'd like to invite you to an open house that will be hosting for adjacent property owners, and that will be held next Tuesday, August twentieth, at six-thirty PM at Northview Church, there at 186th Street and Casey Road, just down the street from the site. And again, that was next Tuesday, the twentieth, at six-thirty. So in closing, if you have any questions or comments that we can take with us here this evening, we'd be happy to work through those as we move through the public process. Otherwise, we'd like to thank you for your time.
Questions, counsel, or clarifications needed? Seeing none, then we'll just move this on to APC.
Thank you.
Dane, you're back up now for Spring Mill Point.
Evening, once again, counsel. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening is the introduction of a new PUD, to be known as the Spring Mill Point PUD, which will be located at the southwest corner of State Road 32 and Austrian Pine Way. This property is currently zoned as part of the Maple Knoll PUD. This proposal requests to repeal and replace the existing zoning, creating a new PUD, defaulting to the GB, General Business Zoning District of the UDO moving forward. Maple Knoll PUD properties exist to the south, while the Austrian Pine PUD exists to the east, and the Meyer-owned property exists to the west. The neighborhood meeting is scheduled for six-thirty PM at the City Services Center this Wednesday, August fourteenth, and this item is scheduled for a public hearing also at the Tuesday, September third Plan Commission meeting. John Dabishawis, Nelson Frankenberger is present this evening to provide more details about the proposed PUD.
Again, for the record, John Dabishawis with Nelson Frankenberger. We represent the petitioner in this matter, the Westfield Investment Company. Present tonight is Bo Wilfong, the owner of Westfield Investment Company, and other members of the development team. The matter before you at this time is the introduction of the Spring Mill Point Planned Unit Development District, which is a rezone request to permit the amendment of the commercial development standards, which are currently applicable to the real estate. The real estate's outlined in yellow on display now on the aerial, it's approximately eight-and-a-half acres in area, and is generally located at the southwest corner of State Road 32 and Austrian Pine Way. On the north side of Spring Mill Point Drive, which is the drive served by, which services Tractor Supply and the daycare center, which was approved earlier this year by the Plan Commission. So, real quickly, State Road 32 along our north perimeter, Austrian Pine Way, here to our east, Tractor Supply, and then the Goddard School, sits on the piece of real estate to our south, with room for another building west of and adjacent to the Goddard Today, the real estate is currently zoned with general business as the underlying zoning classification, but per the terms of the Maple Knoll PUD. As indicated, the proposed amendment would provide general business as the underlying zoning classification, with amendments which are similar to those approved for adjacent parcels before the council and Plan Commission earlier this year, most recently the Austrian Pine PUD, which is immediately to the east of this site, between the post office and Austrian Pine Way. Surrounding zoning includes the Dar Town Crossing PUD to the northeast, the Austrian Pine PUD to the east, and other parcels to the south and west, which are zoned for the terms of the Maple Knoll PUD, with general business as the underlying zoning, including the applicability of the State Road 32 overlay standards. The PUD will provide for the following: it will address internal side yard building setbacks when situations are present regarding shared parking. It'll require greater setback for one building, providing staggering of building setbacks, and addressing the unique right-of-way configuration along State Road 32. It'll allow for one building to have a size of four thousand square feet, including hardscape and outdoor seating area. It will address the location of dumpster enclosures, because the site has three frontages. We've got State Road 32, the Spring Mill Point Drive, and Austrian Pine Way frontage. Regarding landscaping standards, the PUD will address foundation plantings where adjacent to drive-through aisles, perimeter parking landscaping requirements where two lots would abut each other, but share through an existing parking lot, and it'll require a pocket park along the State Road 32 roadside trail. In summary, the standards of the PUD are designed to mimic or follow the site and commercial development format required for other properties along the State Road 3002 overlay, which the council has reviewed over the last eighteen months to two years. In conclusion, the Spring Mill Point PUD is being requested at this time to position the subject property for development, consistent with properties along this segment of State Road 32, as staff indicated, were positioned west of Austrian Pine Way and east of Spring Mill, with Meyer developing to our south and west. However, in this instance, the parcel is already zoned commercial business, so the underlying zoning is already commercial business. Other petitions that you've seen have underlying zoning, which is enclosed industrial, over an industrial today. We're just trying to iron out those same rough edges which others have through the petitions that they filed with you for consideration to rezone from enclosed industrial to general business, so we're just taking those and amending, again, the development standards. Today, we're zoned pursuant to the terms of the Maple Knoll PUD, and we're rezoning this parcel and this parcel, this eight acres exclusively, to a new PUD that defaults to the UDO, but then addresses those development standards, which I enumerated in our presentation. Staff indicated that we do have a neighborhood meeting scheduled, that's scheduled for the City Services Building this Wednesday at six-thirty. We'd appreciate your recommendation and your comments moving forward to the Plan Commission for public hearing on September the third. Thank you.
Counsel, have any questions with John? We'll move it to APC. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. For the record, Caleb Ernest with the Community Development Department. The item presented for introduction tonight is an amendment to the Wheeler Landing Planned Unit Development District. This area affected by this amendment is approximately nine acres, and is currently zoned the Wheeler Landing PUD District. The area is located at the northwest corner of Wheeler Road and State Road 32. The PUD amendment proposes modifying the trail corridor width of the State Highway 32 overlay district section of the UDO as applicable to the Wheeler Landing PUD. Nick Churchill of Wheeler Landing LLC is here to present details of the project. Both he and I are available if you have questions for the petitioner and staff. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Nick Churchill. I'm here tonight on behalf of Wheeler Farms, the property owners. As you can see, if As you can see from the brief nature of that amendment, we are seeking to revise the standards of our overlay section of our approved PUD. That PUD was approved approximately one year ago. This modification seeks to modify five-point, section five-point-three, K-four-A of the thirty-two overlay, specifically the trail width corridor. This modification seeks to create a mimicking of the development standards that exist with the existing developments on our east and west. In essence, it would modify the standards of that trail width to provide for approximately a forty-eight-foot wide trail corridor on one end of the frontage and approximately a sixty-foot wide trail corridor on the other end of our frontage. If you have any questions, we're here to answer that, and we respectfully request that you forward us to the APC. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll move this on to APC. Matt, your backup, Union Square.
Sorry, let me pull this up here. Before you this evening is a PUD proposal for a mixed-use development on the block north of the Grand Junction Plaza. This is a four-acre site. It would permit a mix of uses, and the petitioner, Justin Moffett, is here this evening, and I think he's going to walk through this in a little bit of detail for you folks.
Is it, is it this one? Is it this one? Or is it the? I didn't see it here. I got concept land. Okay. It's gonna be the best we can do. Okay.
Okay. We'll navigate.
That's fine. That's totally fine.
Good evening, Justin Moffett with Old Town Companies. Here tonight to discuss the Union Square, Grand Junction PUD. Should be familiar, this is a conversation we've been having in the public realm, really, for several months since April and in dialogue with city leadership for over a year now. This project encompasses the block immediately north of the recently approved Grand Junction Plaza project. State Road thirty-two to the north, Mill Street to the west, Union Street to the east, and then Jersey Street, which is our border with the Grand Junction Plaza area to the south. Our initial interest as a development company in working with the citizens and civic leaders of Westfield and planning Union Square was generated by the plans to redevelop the public plaza area. Obviously, that level of public investment is an attraction, and we believe that it would be a phenomenal neighbor to a new development plan. To date, we've engaged in dialogue with city leaders, the Downtown Westfield Association, and the Grand Junction Task Force, with our goal of gaining a greater understanding of what they'd like to see happen with this subject property. As most of you are aware, this property includes Wolfie's Grill, a single-family residential building, a Lions Club, several vacant properties, the pharmacy building, and the old fire station. Quite a few challenges with this site, with the drainage swale that travels through the property from thirty-two down to Jersey Street, a lot of topographical change in the site, and we see the opportunity to redevelop this site as a master plan development where everything's cohesive and it works together. In our conversations with downtown stakeholders so far, we've heard loud and clear that people want a redevelopment plan that is authentic to Westfield. I believe that statement will mean different things to different people, but what we heard in that, not that we're right, but what we felt like we heard in that authentic-to-Westfield comment that was said over and over, was a mix of eclectic buildings and uses and architectural styles. In the packet that was submitted to council, and I think that Mr. Skelton can pull up in the character illustrations, which is filed, yes, which is that one, was a mix of old and new, different heights and styles of architecture. A little village of different architectural styles is what we would propose to bring forward. If you keep scrolling there for me. If you pause there, it'd be great. So, we set about creating a master plan that we thought represented what we heard the community want, but tonight, we're really introducing zoning ordinance that mirrors the LBH, Local Business Historic District. It's a PUD that builds upon that with the idea that we'd introduce this into the public realm, make sure that we had consensus that the city would like to see this move forward, and then we'd reengage the public in a deeper dialogue about master planning this. We frequently employed the process of a planning charrette, where we convene stakeholders from city leadership, Downtown Westfield Association, Grand Junction Task Force, other people who have a voice in downtown to influence ultimately what the project becomes. So, this PUD is asking permission to rezon the district to make sure that we can move forward with the master plan, and then we'd invest greater resources and time and expense in engaging the public in a deeper dialogue. In April of this year, when we made an announcement, it was predicated on the park plans moving forward. To our knowledge, the park budgeting and construction management approvals, selecting vendors is in full force, and so we're optimistic that the park will be under construction in short order. And so, what we had announced, that once the park was going, we would then engage in a dialogue with the community, and really, that's what we're kicking off tonight. So we see the PUD approval process is the first piece of that. So, again, should the Union Square PUD be approved by the city council, we would then, in addition to the required public meetings that we'd have for the PUD process, we would, before we move forth any construction plans or sought additional approvals through the Planning Commission, we would engage in a really in-depth planning charrette with the community. So, with that, I thank you for allowing us the opportunity to introduce this, and we look forward to partnering with Westfield in what we believe is a critical next step in propelling the vibrant downtown forward. Thank you.
Are there any questions, your panelists? This is about a twenty-five million dollar project, as you envision it through full build-out. Is that in the ballpark?
Yes, sir. At least twenty-five million dollars of new building cost and, again, in the filing, we showed different character images and scaled buildings all around the site, with the idea and one of the advantages of a phased building approach and eclectic mix of buildings. If a new tenant or use emerges that we didn't anticipate, it would be a great win for the downtown. We have the ability to amend the design of a building and insert a new tenant into the mix.
The other thing is, I just would like the people in the audience to know that you are a Westfield graduate, so you're coming back to do a project.
I attended Westfield, and then Rebecca McGuckin on my team, who will be very active in the process, is also Westfield alum. Thank you.
Other questions, your panelists? Can we move it to APC? Pam, what? Matt?
Good evening, members of the council. Let me pull this up. I'm double-duty here. What you have before you this evening is a PUD proposal for the Wright Property Group. It's a new PUD that would permit the construction of a commercial building for Ninja Zone. If you're not familiar with Ninja Zone, they were located within the Grand Park Event Center until not too long ago. So this would be a separate standalone facility immediately east of the existing Pacers basketball facility, and this shows, oh, sorry, wrong one. This shows the general layout. So this is the Pacers facility here to the west. Grand Park is around to the north. And then, there is a conceptual rendering in here as well. It gives you an idea of what they're thinking about, and I do believe that the petitioner's representative, Mr. Bittner, is here this evening and may have a few words for you.
Again, we'd like to ask you to forward this to the Plan Commission for their next meeting for consideration. A few things that we would point out here. The facility does, or potential future facility, if approved, would abut the existing Pacers Camp facility immediately to the west. Our client, Casey Wright, has a long family history in the gymnastics business going back to nineteen seventy-five. They have a facility here in Westfield, a smaller facility within a mile to the south on Kendall Court. They'd like to upscale that. They have numerous franchises, in excess of three hundred franchises, that they serve around the country. They have a merchandising facility that serves those franchisees that's located in Noblesville, and they have corporate offices that are located in Carmel. This facility would allow them to bring all of those operations under one roof, so they would have the gymnastics, the Ninja Zone offices, and merchandising operation all at this location. We've heard some preliminary comments. We're working with staff and, of course, council on materials for the exterior of the building. Understand that a precedent's been set with the neighbor to the west. It has a very nice, very nice structure there. We're working with him to make, certainly to make sure he is in approval of anything that we put up, so we're working closely with him. We're also going to have a common parking drive through his existing ingress and egress point. We may be able to work out a parking agreement with him to give him some relief. Understand he's prone to have big crowds over there with the kind of services that we cater to. Our clientele tend to be younger kids, and our heaviest point of usage is after school on weekdays, so say from five until eight. His heavy usage tends to be on weekends, and so we may be able to help him out a little bit with his parking overflow. I believe that those are the high points. We'd be glad to hear any comments that you have, answer any questions if you have any, and otherwise, we'd just ask that you forward this to Plan Commission. We are, we're a little bit new to this. I haven't had a chance to talk to Pam Howard yet, but to the extent that we need a neighbor meeting, we'll get that scheduled and make sure that we're consistent with your protocol.
Any questions from council?
Question more for staff. Was IBH officially taken off? Because this is on that same property, correct?
Yeah, I don't think the petition has been withdrawn, but you might have more information on that than I do.
I think that same site, I think the volleyball partner has dropped out of this. At some point, I understand it would have been a joint venture, but no longer. This would be Casey's project entirely.
I think we might just need to clarify that, because if we had something already in process and then brought something else for the exact same parcel, just administratively, that seems a little odd.
Well, it would be odd, but, I mean, the fact of the matter is, whoever zones it first, it's zoned, and whoever zones it last, that's how it's zoned, right? I mean...
You have to have control of the property to be able to do it, so who has control of the property?
I'm sure contractually, it's not that big of a deal, but it is different, it is odd.
Okay.
It'll get cleaned up, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, concerns? We'll move this on to APC.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt, Pam, ever.
One last time.
Another UDO.
All right. Before you is a second phase of zoning, of Unified Development Ordinance, proposed amendments. This is similar to what you saw earlier, adopting a UDO fix. This is the initiation of a round two. There's also a round three and four that will come forward, maybe not all between now and the end of the year, but we're just trying to take these in bite-sized chunks so we can get them through the process. Just at a very high level, a lot of what is included in this one are paint-up, fix-up, like grammatical corrections, clarifications that make the ordinance function or easier to apply for us. And, but, and there are two substantive areas that I would just draw your attention to. One is shared parking landscaping. Right now, our UDO does not contemplate a situation where, when there are shared parking fields, which we actually like to try to encourage, our ordinance by default would have you buffer between them, and it wastes, it's not as efficient in using real estate. So, that is, that's one proposed fix. Right now, people are doing it on a case-by-case basis by introducing those terms in their PUDs, and it's been received well. It's just we're fixing it so they don't have to do that anymore. And then, the second one has to do with some clearer, and I'm not a hundred percent clear on all the nuances here, but it relates to the temporary use permit requirements. And if you ask me any details, I won't be able to give you any, but I can get you answers.
Anyone have questions for Matt that he can't answer right now?
If you do review it and have questions, please let us...
Stop, stop. Just sit down. Stop.
All right, stop.
Okay, that ends the new business portion of the meeting, so let's move on. Do we have any guest comment cards?
I do not.
Okay. City council?
A lady here would like to speak.
Oh, okay.
I asked if he'd be thrown out. Just on general principle. Anybody got a second, Joe? My name is Elaine Henshaw. I live at fifteen thirty Woodside Drive. I've lived there for forty years, but I've lived in Westphal my entire life. And I'm just here, I have two concerns, two general concerns. The first one is, tonight's agenda really speaks to the concerns that many citizens in this city have about the proliferation of developments, housing developments, and the burden that they put on our schools, our infrastructure, our public safety departments, et cetera. And I have kids in this, in the school, grandkids, not kids. I had kids in that school, but they graduated there and went on to college and did well. But I want to say that the future, that's their future. That's their future. You all need to be mindful of what you're doing today and the impact that it has on the future of Westfield. My father was on the town council. He was mindful of what went on in Westfield. So, and my brother's on the town council, and I want to be mindful of what goes on in Westfield, and I'm going to speak out. The second thing that is a concern is the ability of the individuals to be heard. I'm concerned that the developers with the cash in their hands are more heard than the private citizens here in Westfield. I'm really concerned about that. I know that there's going to be progress. I'm not opposed to progress. What I'm opposed to is progress that is not thoughtful, that is, you know, first come, first served, and, again, these are my opinions, and I want the city, council, some of you won't be here, but some of you will be here, and the mayor, and APC, and the staff to be mindful of what they're doing.
Could we have your card, please? Could we have your card, please?
And it's not Mrs. Henshaw?
Good evening. I'm Judy Stanley Shuck, 209 West Main Street, Westfield, and I've been a resident here longer than most of you. Anyway, I'd just like to share with you something. Westfield was a thriving community back in 1834 and still is today. The Westfield Preservation Alliance began as an organization to work at preserving the richest history in Hamilton County, Indiana. For the past several years, the WPA has worked to have the downtown recognized to become the second historic district in Westfield by the National Register of Historic Places. Excuse me. A historic district in the United States is a group of buildings, properties, or sites that have been designated by one of several entities on different levels as historically or architecturally significant. The US federal government designates historic districts through the US Department of Interior under the guidance of the National Park Service. Federally designed historic districts are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Historic districts allows rural areas to preserve their characters through historic preservation programs. These include Main Street programs that can be used to redevelop rural downtowns. Using historic preservation programs as an economic development tool for local governments in rural areas has enabled some of those areas to take advantage of their history and develop a tourism market that in turn provides funds for maintaining an economic stability that these areas would not have been otherwise seen. Westfield was honored in February of 2019 to have the downtown area placed on the National Register of Historic Places. This includes historical buildings along State Road 32, as well as the old fire station and businesses and residences on North Union and Penn Street. The Division of Historic Preservation and Archaeology will have a public presentation of certificates for properties newly listed to the National Register at the 9th Annual Department of National Resources Historic Preservation Awards Ceremony on August 13, 2019, at the Indiana State Fair. Westfield will be presented its certificate for the National Register at this ceremony. The public is invited to attend the ceremony at the DNR Amphitheater, located behind the DNR Building, on the Indiana State Fairgrounds at 12:30 PM tomorrow. During the presentation, representatives of Westfield, who were key contributors to the nomination process, will be recognized. I just want to say that the citizens of Westfield has changed over the decades, but our history hasn't. We can pause with telling our stories from the past, but still look to the future. Thank you.
Any other comment cards? City council members have anything?
I can report on last week's plan commission, which finished at about 11 o'clock. The items of business there were the Westchester PUD amendment, which we addressed tonight, the Wheeler Landing Economic Development Area Amendment, which we also addressed. We had public hearings on Orchard View of Westfield, a PUD. Also, public hearings on a development plan, site plan for Spring Mill Station, southwest corner apartments. Spring Mill Center PUD held a public hearing for that. And our last item, the landings at Village Farms, PUD, took the bulk of that evening. We had quite a few comments on that. I think there were somewhere between 50 and 60 people spoke at that, and we adjourned at about 11 o'clock.
Any other council member who have comments or questions? I'm going to comment on one of the guest comments. I hope that when people talk about impact of development on schools, that they've read the demographic study of the schools. Demographic study of the schools, which was done when Woodwin was going to be adopted, which it never was, it was rejected, shows that Westfield Elementary enrollment will actually start declining next year, and the enrollment has been very consistent with what the demographic study said. People have a tendency to forget that we graduate 550 to 600 students every year, and we lose them from the system, so you have to have some people coming in to replace those that you lose to graduation. And I know the mayor meets on a regular basis with the school administration, so I think I can speak for all the council members. We're very sensitive to the community, we're very sensitive to traffic, very sensitive to the growth and the impact on the schools with everything that we do. But I would tell you that if you talk to any school official, if you're not growing, your school system is in trouble. There are a lot of school systems in the state that are in trouble financially because they are not growing. So, we have to have a balance, and I think we try to balance that out quite well. I would like to have, maybe Jeremy back here would comment, or Mayor, you comment. I have noticed some comments about Grand Junction. I have noticed the infrastructure work is still going on with the Grand Junction. I think that's one of our walking paths back to the south side of the Grand Junction. There's gravel in place now, but there's that, and then also maybe comment on the lakes behind the Public Works.
Oh, yeah.
Notice that one is filled in, and the other one is probably getting close to being filled in.
The gravel pathway you parked to is an access to a much more spectacular piece called a sewer lift station.
Oh. So, that's part of the access.
That was part of the expensive, well, citizens, of course, now bears all that cost, but, you know, when we go to have all this nice development downtown and Justin Moffett's proposal and Paul Estridge's proposals, we forget, because commonly, we're working out in cornfields, right, developing new homes. Well, we've got a very ancient infrastructure of water and sewer downtown that citizens has done a wonderful job quietly updating over the last several years, including the entire sewer system for downtown, so that we can enjoy some of the developments and all the park-street activity and all the restaurants that are going on down there. So, that part is sewer work, but as they finish that, they'll finish running a line further east along the old Midland Trace, and then we'll pave that area of the Midland from Mill Street West over to what will be the new, formerly Poplar Street, soon to be called Westfield Boulevard, which that Westfield Boulevard project will go out to bid here in the next two or three weeks. So, that project is also proceeding, beginning yet this year. Mark, you mentioned behind City Hall, you keep bringing up sewer stuff. Those were, that also were the old sewer plant back there. So, there were two ponds back behind the Public Works City Service Building. Those have been completely reclaimed, meeting all environmental standards inspected by DNR, IDEM, et cetera, and so we're in the process. One of them is kind of being filled. One of them is still there, it's very clean, and we're going to be offering some, Jeremy and his Public Works and Vicky with Communications and all, they're going to be offering some sessions where we can, I think we've already had one, I was gone, about what are we going to do with that area? Make some great parkland, but it has some uses, the Midland Trail's right behind it, so, yeah, we're going to look at that, too. So, that, and another Public Works project, and let me check my date, I think it is August 21st. State Road 32 will be closed down and will have a moonlight raising of the Monon Trail midsection over 32. And if they've measured right and it fits, the road will be back open by rush hour the next morning. So, that will be a huge piece to get in place for, next year, we'll host a large bike to Colts Camp that we really couldn't do this year. And speaking of Colts Camp, we have two more days, Wednesday and Thursday. Both of those are scrimmage days with the Cleveland Brown people. Ticket, pre-sold free tickets are always kind of our indication, some of the days, they're in the mornings, they're 2,000 or 3,000 tickets. I think one of the largest days, we had 6,000 people out there, but I will tell you that ticket sales as of this afternoon for both Wednesday and Thursday, they've sold nearly 10, given away nearly 10,000 tickets each day. So, it's going to be, it's going to be busy, it's going to be fun, and I, because our staff has two more days to go through, I won't tell them yet all the accolades that the Colts ownership and staff have told me about, but I'll reveal those publicly as soon as we get through the next few days. But I can tell you, the Colts people are very, very pleased with our organization. Our volunteers out there have just been fantastic. I get all kinds of compliments from the Colts and the public on how well our staff and all of our volunteers are doing. And lastly, this is kind of bittersweet, but this guy beside me here has been sitting here for, what, 10 years, Matthew? And this is the last time he's going to be here. You know, Matt is moving on at the end of the month, and I don't like it, but he's going to be right here in town. He's going to, he's going to go back into private practice, make some money, perhaps, that we can't, yeah, hopefully. But I tell you, Matt stepped into a position that, well, frankly, the process was a, what was it, Matt?
It needed some work.
It needed some work. It was a mess, and Matt worked for years to develop the process, to get all of the ordinances in shape. He's been through, gosh, I don't know, 15 or 16 updates to the comprehensive plan that was passed back in 2008, and has kept up and developed a wonderful staff. You all know that Kevin Todd, who's been here for many, many years, will be stepping up into Matt's position, but I just want to publicly thank Matthew for his years of service, and we're going to miss you, all right? Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, adjourn.
Steve Hoover, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Jim Ake. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Which unanimous. Have a good night.